Hi, everyone. I am Councilmember Chris Wharton from the Salt Lake City Council, and I represent District Three, which includes the avenues. And today, we're going to be talking about some changes to UTA Routes Six and Three, which are going to become Routes Two Oh Nine and Two Twenty Three. These are the two of the main bus routes that go through the avenues. And I have a group of people with me today to answer a lot of the questions that we've got from the community about why we're making those changes, why they're needed, and what the factors are to consider those changes. So I'll go ahead and hand it off to Julianne. Do you want to introduce yourself first?
Sure, Councilmember Wharton. I'm Julianne Sebula. I work for the Salt Lake City Transportation Division, and I manage the transit program, among other things, for the city. I work closely in collaboration with UTA when there are changes, some of the changes the city makes and some UTA makes. And so I'm here mainly to talk about what's in our Transit Master Plan and help with questions from the city transportation perspective.
Thanks for being here. Russell?
Hi, thanks, Councilmember. I'm Russ Fox. I'm with UTA. I'm the Director of Planning. And so anyway, just excited to just try and help out with any questions or answer these questions for the group. And I'll turn it over to Eric.
I'm Eric Callison, Manager of Service Planning. I work with the UTA Change Day process and also with our community engagement efforts. And I'll let Megan go next and introduce that a little bit more.
Hi, my name's Megan Waters. I'm the Community Engagement Manager at UTA. Been involved with the Change Day process as well alongside Eric's team. Excited to be here. Thanks for the opportunity.
All right, and then Dustin and Hassan, do you want to introduce yourselves?
Dustin? Sorry, go ahead, Dustin. It's fine.
You're on mute, Dustin.
I'm Dustin Parks. I'm the District Three liaison for Councilmember Wharton.
And my name is Hassan Abdi. I'm a Public Engagement Coordinator for the City Council.
Well, thanks, everybody, for being here. So to start with, why is UTA or and the city seeking these changes? Why not just leave the routes the way they are right now?
So I can give everyone just a little bit of background on this. Kind of the genesis for these changes that are planned for August 2022 really got started with the Salt Lake City Transit Master Plan in kind of 2015, 2016, 2017. We worked very closely with the city on that. And what the big takeaway from that, and I'll let Julianne correct me on anything, is that we did identify that the avenues was a market for more frequent transit service, basically for increased transit service in general. I will be popping in and out of slides for a second here because I'm a very visual person. But if we look at, just as a brief example, there will not be a quiz on this. But if we look at our Transit Propensity Index, which is an analysis that we do at UTA to determine the likelihood that people will use transit in the vicinity of a single route. If we look at all of our bus routes, the avenues is right at the top. From our 2019 analysis, Route Six was the second best in the entire UTA service area as far as bus routes go, except for Route Two on Two Hundred South. But when you look on the right-hand side, Route Six has the thirty-first highest ridership and is beaten out by the South Utah County Shuttle, Payson, Salem, Springville, Spanish Fork, which is not the kind of company we really expect the avenues to keep based on the demographics and the market segmentation that we've done. Same thing with Third Avenue and Eleventh Avenue. We don't see that we're meeting the market very well in this area. It kind of, like I said, we're going to be popping in and out a little bit. You know, we don't feel that we're meeting the market in the avenues in the best way. We also, you know, part of that is because we offer a higher level of service on other routes. We do have other routes in the system that are currently fifteen minutes, including Two Oh Nine. And part of that is because we don't go everywhere that people in the avenues want to go. We can take people downtown and we can take people to the U of U, and that's about it right now. All of the avenues buses are kind of east-west mobility. There's not really a connection to any other part of the city. That's something that we hear, you know, from our customers, from people in the community that call us. We do take that kind of feedback officially for things like Change Day, but we take that kind of feedback all the time. You know, we're always compiling that, and part of our planning update process is a review of all the comments that we received. Another thing is, we're really working very hard at UTA right now to make our system more accessible. A few years ago, only about twenty-five percent of our system was actually accessible per the ADA. And that's, a lot of that is because old stops had been grandfathered in, and so they were technically okay. But a lot of the bus stops in our system are not very hospitable to anyone, let alone to individuals with disabilities. And so that's a big push to the avenues is an interesting challenge to serve in an accessible way, just because of the geography of the neighborhood. And I think, you know, everybody that lives there understands that. But this is kind of a way for us to meet that challenge as well. You know, just as an example... This was a bit weird in my head. Go ahead.
Oh, I said, I think this is, was going to lead into my next question, which is, so we understand why, from the data that you showed a minute ago, why UTA would be seeking a change to try to increase ridership and make the avenues more accessible. And I think this is what you were about to just talk about is what factors does UTA look at to make, to determine whether a reroute or a change can be more successful?
Yes, sure. And so there are a number of factors that go into the accessibility part of it. And then we can also talk about the operability part in just a minute. This, I just have two examples here. This is a bus stop in Salt Lake City on Navajo Street in One Thousand South. All that's needed to make this bus stop ADA compliant is to fill in a little bit of concrete between the sidewalk and the road. Done. This is a different stop in Orem. See, this is on a hill. This is Sand Hill Road in Orem. You can see this very long ramp actually also doubles back around. And that's what you can see here. This railing continues. And this is so that people can get off the bus here and go to the Walmart. That's just off camera. So the location of where the bus stop is has tremendous implications on how easy it is to make that bus stop, either ADA compliant or just more accessible in general. And that's a process that we're working on throughout our entire system right now in all of the different counties and cities that we serve. And so this is an opportunity for us to take a look at that. You know, we have some areas in the avenues, current bus stops that we serve, that are very difficult. You know, this E Street right here, we have this kind of steep slope that you basically either have to stand on this hill or wait in the road. And that's not very safe, and certainly not very desirable for customers. And this is the stop at Sixth Avenue and I Street. There is a little kind of landing spot here, but you do have to either come down these stairs or go out to the intersection, and you can only access this bus stop from the road. And there is parking right in front of it, and so you can kind of see, here's the bus. It's very difficult to use these stops in the avenues. A little bit broader as well. This map on the left is the current configuration of the buses in the avenues, and it requires a lot of up and down movement to access the bus. You have the problem of the bus stops being on the slopes on Sixth Avenue. You also have the problem of you either have to walk up or down to get to that bus. Running the planned service on Route Two Oh Nine allows UTA to do more of the going up and down, and passengers are able to access the bus more easily by walking horizontally. They're not a bus stop proposed for every block, but you can walk horizontally and down instead of having to just choose walking up or down. And so this is, this is kind of, it's a big paradigm shift. We recognize that this is out of a lot of people's comfort zone in the avenues, but that's, there's some kind of difficult accessibility problems that we're trying to tackle here that we think, you know, we can make this service a lot more usable. In addition to providing connections to other parts of the city, we can also make the service a lot more usable and attractive to people that are trying to access it.
Okay. Oh, did you want, sorry, go ahead.
One more reason for the change.
Go ahead.
Because like many industries, we are dealing with a very tight labor situation. So just to be really real with everyone, we are discontinuing twenty-two routes entirely, August Change Day. A number of those, about a hundred and twenty. So a number of those were already suspended since the beginning of COVID, and we're just making that suspension permanent. But we have found ourselves needing to make some pretty significant changes to our system in order to preserve the connections, the frequencies, the service that people need. You know, we're certainly not taking this challenge lying down. But by combining Routes Three and Two Twenty Three, by combining Route Six and Two Oh Nine, we're able to actually increase the frequency of service and the access to the avenues while being able to do that with a slightly smaller complement of drivers. If we were to try to make the same level of reductions, we'd basically have to reduce all, and not change any of the routing, I guess I should say. If we're going to make the same level of reduction and not change any of the routing in the avenues, we would basically have to reduce all the service to sixty minutes, seven days a week on all the routes in the avenues. And this is, we feel a much more usable service and alternative, even though it is a big paradigm shift.
Okay. That's okay. Thank you. I know this is complicated and is a lot of data and studies and decisions that are kind of being boiled down. So I appreciate you trying to summarize it like you have. So can you talk about, I think, a lot of residents that I'm hearing from that are on the streets that are most directly affected or feel like they didn't get a good idea of the process ahead of time, and they weren't able to weigh in before the decision, before the comment period was closed? So can you talk about what engagement looks like and what changes, now that the comment period is closed, what changes could still be made?
So I'll start, and then I'll let Megan take over because she is the expert on this. But so for every Change Day, we do do a thirty-day comment period. It's required for any major changes. And we collect any and all comments that we receive at that point and synthesize them. And we'll be putting out in the near future, putting out a report of all of the feedback that we received. We do notice that on social media and the newspaper. We put up signs at all of our existing bus stops. We do highly encourage everyone to either follow us on social media or just, you know, check in every once in a while, make sure. You know, this is the first time that we've made major bus changes to the avenues in a very long time. And so I think, you know, we do engage regularly with our current customers and groups in the avenues. But I think it's, it's been a big change this time around that, I guess, you know, people are saying, well, I haven't really needed to engage with UTA in the past, and now all of a sudden I do. So we want to make sure that those channels are open going forward, you know. So we have that. There's the official comment period for Change Day. We do also take comments all the time. Anyone can call in or send us a tweet or anything like that any day of the week. We do have a process for handling that feedback, and we do, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we do record all of that. Anything that we can't act on immediately, we do review as part of our five-year service planning process. There's also kind of a parallel, kind of longer-term engagement, I guess. I mentioned the Salt Lake City Transit Master Plan. There was an engagement effort as part of that, and there was a lot of public outreach with that a few years ago. We also had the Service Choices Project in 2019 and 2020, where that was connected to the fourth quarter sales tax that was passed in Salt Lake County. We did a lot of public outreach with that. We did surveys. Received about three thousand surveys from riders and non-riders as part of that effort. We did also have a public engagement opportunity for our most recent five-year service plan, which was approved in early 2021. The five-year service plan is on a two-year rolling cycle. So we'll actually be working on the update to the five-year service, the next update to the five-year service plan later this year. So to kind of second half of this year, we expect to have some pretty substantial public comment as well on the new five-year service plan. And so we do, we have, you can call in any day about anything. You can also look at some of these longer-term engagement efforts, and then we do have a specific public comment period for every Change Day as well. I've probably said enough. I'll let Megan fill in everything that I left out.
You did great. You did great. The only thing I will add is that we do cover a pretty large service area. And so during Change Day, we do need to engage across about eighty, over eighty cities across the service area from Utah County to Weber County. And so we try our best to be general about that and make sure folks, folks know about the Change Day process. Like Eric mentioned, we do have some multimedia tools that we employ, social media, the website, as well as on-system signage where we place strategically the signs for discontinued routes. So folks in the avenues on Six probably saw the signs. We are interested in continuously improving the process, though, and so really appreciate this discussion too for that.
I'm just going to add one more thing with as far as like our public engagement piece. As Eric mentioned, we're in the process of updating our five-year service plan, which, like he said, we do that every two years. And when some of these changes are also implementing that five-year service plan, that's our five-year, you know, how we're going to implement our service. And so that's a, that's a really good touch point with UTA. We are also starting a, we're creating a bigger long-range transit plan that we are kicking off that process, which is going to look at, again, our entire system, and it's going to look at it for thirty years out. So think of it like the Salt Lake City Transportation Master Plan or Transit Master Plan. So UTA is going to have their own, and so we'll have some public engagement as well with that. So anybody who's interested is, and Megan, you can maybe talk about, I don't know if we have like signups and stuff like that, but at least, at least if you're following us on social media, you can see when those engagement opportunities are out there to look at and talk about what our service is.
So Megan, you touched on an important point that I think that people need to know about this. And this route, these two routes don't just serve in Salt Lake City, right? These go, I think you said one goes all the way to Holiday or Mill Creek area?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so both of these are not just routes that are within even just the avenues or just even within Salt Lake City. These are multi, going across multiple cities. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Route Two Twenty Three goes through, will go through the avenues, past the U of U Research Park. It'll serve kind of the east bench of Salt Lake City and then East Mill Creek and Holiday. And then Route Two Oh Nine starts downtown, excuse me, and then serves Ninth East through Salt Lake City, Mill Creek, Murray, and then it ends near Fashion Place West or Fashion Place Mall, Fashion Place West Track Station.
Okay. So what changes can be made at this point in the process? Either from the city or from UTA or in conjunction with each other?
So at this point, the public comment period has closed, and the changes that we're making in the avenues are referred to as planned changes. They're no longer proposed changes. As far as the routing goes and the level of service, that is what is now planned for August. We are still working on individual bus stop locations. In some cases, we have gotten a lot of comment from avenues residents about where these bus stops should and shouldn't go. So we are still synthesizing that and working with, still communicating with some individuals on that. As far as that goes, you know, at any of these engagement opportunities that we'll be having, we will still take all of the feedback that anybody has, and we'll still include that in our analysis for our upcoming five-year service plan and as appropriate, as Russ mentioned, for our longer-term plans. But as far as August goes, those changes will be going forward. And so our conversation needs to be more about, okay, where do the bus stops go? How do we work with the community on this change? Rather than potentially changing something at this point in the routing or in the service level to these routes.
I see. So are there any plans to mitigate safety concerns that we're hearing from residents along these routes? I know that, that it's going to go past the Lindsay Gardens Dog Park and at least on the route, I think, either going north or the route going south. And then can you, so let me start with that, so.
Sure. And I will say, safety is extremely important to us. You know, that is partly a motivator for some of these changes because we don't want people waiting in the middle of the road on Sixth Avenue. So we did, just to describe a little bit of that process that we go through as well, we have a group, we call it the Safety Committee, but it includes representatives from operations and planning and also from our union, the Amalgamated Transit Union Local Three Eighty Two, who is very active in making sure that working conditions are safe for our bus operators. And so we test, we have tested, you know, pretty much every street and the avenues at some point to try to determine where the safest operating environments. And so a couple of things that have come out of that, currently, we have, the Route Six travels north on N Street and south on M Street. That's north on N and south on M, in case that didn't come through the audio. And so we, as we've looked at how to connect that with the Ninth East Corridor, it turns out, for example, the N Street is no longer feasible because that would require us, I'm just going to gesture with my hands, to make a right turn from South Temple, from Ninth East onto South Temple, and then immediately make a left turn onto N Street without the aid of a traffic signal. So basically, the bus would be diagonal in the road to try to execute that maneuver, blocking lanes of traffic on South Temple, waiting to turn left. And so, for example, we evaluated a couple of different alternatives to that. You know, we looked at I Street is kind of a main thoroughfare in the avenues. Does that make sense? To have the buses travel north and south on I Street instead of on N and M. And for example, I Street is too narrow for two buses to pass unless we got rid of all the parking. And so we looked at that. We looked at M Street as well. Can we just go north and south on M Street? And M Street is also for two buses to pass comfortably. And so, you know, we kind of have arrived at, well, it makes more sense to say, let's just have the bus continue to only go one direction on each street like we have been doing on M and N, but we'll have to move the northbound movement to L Street and keep the southbound movement on M Street. You know, as far as that goes, you know, we have looked at these different corridors to say, this is what makes sense from an operations perspective as well as a safety perspective. We do recognize that the streets and the avenues are not wide thoroughfares. Fairly narrow streets. And recognize, you know, the city just, just, City Council just voted to reduce the travel speed on residential streets to twenty miles per hour. We feel confident that we have a safe operation by respecting the speed limit, by driving carefully. We do put our bus drivers through quite a bit of training to make sure that they can be alert and attentive, you know, and they do operate in environments very similar to this. You know, speaking from the road design perspective and the proximity to residences, it's very similar to Route Nine in the Glendale and Poplar Grove neighborhoods in Salt Lake City, where the bus is just traveling down a residential street. In fact, the movements on L and M Street are less constrained for a bus than some of the turns that we ask the bus to make currently on Route Nine, such as from Navajo Street to Arapaho Street and vice versa. And so we have looked at this. We feel confident that this is at least as safe as any of the other operating environments we currently have in the city. And we, you know, we do instruct our operators, we do train them to be very cautious and conscientious of people that are crossing the street or people that may be, you know, in the road or things like that. But I don't, we don't have identified, I guess, anything in this area that is unusual for us in terms of operations. And so that's, that's kind of, we don't feel like there's going to be any particular concerns that are unique to this area, especially where we have the bus only going one direction on L and M Street.
And I'll maybe just add to what Eric has had to say in that I work really closely with our city traffic engineer as well as our safety manager to evaluate, for instance, stop locations, the sightlines, whether they're safe in that regard. And also because Salt Lake City owns and controls the street, the right-of-way. If there's, for instance, the need to mark a crosswalk, we can coordinate with UTA in order to do that. And so those are some things that we do from the safety side of things.
Julianne, can you talk to about, one of the things that the city is responsible for in our partnerships with UTA is, well, we're just responsible for in general, is plowing our roads. I've heard a lot of concern from residents about making sure that if the bus routes are changed, you know, how are we going to make sure that these roads are, the prioritization for these roads being plowed is also changed? Can you talk about that for a minute?
Yeah, that's been a very hot topic, actually, recently because we've had a couple of snow incidents this past winter where it didn't warm up afterward, and so the snow stayed for long periods of time. And in particular, around bus stops, they were just not accessible. So we are having a conversation now with our Streets Division and others to say, what, you know, do we need to reexamine our prioritization? How can we ensure that, you know, buses generally can operate safely because streets are made priority where there is transit? But currently, transit is at the bottom of that list, and so we're reexamining that. Sidewalks are also an issue, and I guess I will just add that property owners are responsible for shoveling. And we've encountered with all the redevelopment in the city, especially where we have some vacant parcels or parcels under construction. There's not an active set of eyes just out there seeing that the sidewalk needs to be shoveled. So we're talking through how to address those issues.
Another concern that I've heard from a lot of residents is, will there be increase to noise and pollution or a reduction in air quality on the streets that are immediately impacted by these changes?
So I can give a few thoughts on that. One is, if you compare the average emissions on a bus versus in a private, your average private automobile, which I know there's a wide variety of cars, but if you do the average, if a bus has about four-point-two people on it, it's more efficient in terms of its environmental impact than those same four-point-two people in a car, in a single occupancy car, I should say. So if there's one person per car, as long as there's at least four people on average on the bus, the bus is going to save us emissions in the long run. So we hope that by making the service more usable to our current riders in the avenues and hopefully expanding that to other people as well, we hope to improve the air quality. I will say, you know, there's kind of this image of maybe a bus pulling away from a stop, and there's like a black cloud of smoke at the tailpipe. We have, as an industry, made a lot of progress in the last twenty, thirty years in air quality as well. You know, our current, our current UTA fleet is clean diesels, diesel hybrids, CNG, compressed natural gas buses, as well as we have a few zero-emission electric buses operating in Salt Lake City. And we plan to expand our fleets considerably in the next few years as well to include a lot more electric buses. And so if you see the bus go by, you'll notice it does still have a tailpipe, but you probably won't see anything coming out of it because we have made a lot of progress in reducing those. Um, because we have, uh, made a lot of progress in reducing those, those, uh, emissions out of the bus. Just a minute, baby. Sorry, this is my unpaid intern. Um, and, uh, so, you know, we, we, uh, we do want to continue to improve our fleet, but I will say in terms of air quality, uh, you probably will not notice any fumes or smells from a bus, uh, unless something's very wrong and then it, then, you know, we'll send it to the garage for repair. But in normal operations, uh, that impact will probably be, um, it almost unnoticedable. Um, in terms, I know we've gotten some, some concerns about noise, um, some, some concerns about like traffic, lots, lots of buses, you know, the presence of buses. Um, and I would say personally as someone who lives a few hundred feet from a bus stop, um, fifteen minute bus service is basically one bus every seven and a half minutes. Um, you know, and, and so it's kind of like, well, if you think about the, the, the traffic in your neighborhood or how many cars go down the street, one additional vehicle every seven and a half minutes is not going to like throw off the traffic patterns or, um, uh, you know, create any additional congestion, uh, in general, you know, and, uh, even more so if the bus is only going one way on the street, that'd be one vehicle every fifteen minutes. Um, we had, we heard similar concerns, uh, with the U V X line in Provo and Orem, which is every six minutes, uh, so that would be a bus in either direction every three minutes. Uh, there were a number of concerns from residents in Provo that that was going to cause, you know, traffic jams, um, or, or other problems like that. Um, and we haven't seen anything like that in that operating environment. And that, that is, you know, operating on nine hundred east in Provo and University Parkway, those are very heavy traffic streets. Uh, you know, and, and we're not even seeing problems on those. So I would not anticipate any traffic problems or any, you know, additional uh, noise or fumes impacts really over having a car come by. Uh, for, based on, you know, the, the size, the buses are a little bit larger than the cars, but they're not like super loud. You know, it's not a dump truck that's coming by. Um, it, it's just, you know, and, and it's gone.
Well, and, and maybe I can just add to that, Eric, that, um, it's probably not going to be appreciably different than, um, you know, what is there today with Amazon delivery trucks, for example, and those types of things that are operating in neighborhoods. Um, these buses are probably not going to have an impact that's any greater within that environment of noise that's already present. Um, and again, these are, these are rigorously maintained vehicles. So in many cases, they're, um, actually better from an air quality perspective than other types of heavy vehicles operating on city streets.
I see. Okay. And yeah, I know that like some residents have said that, um, you know, they're concerned with it being a historic neighborhood and a lot of the, um, windows are, are older glass, thinner glass. Um, and so, um, has that, in places where you've made this changes, has that, um, been a, a measurably different factor?
Um, based on our experience, uh, for example, on the west side of the city with Route nine, um, we're, you know, Route nine is also Salt Lake City sponsored route. Um, we, we went, uh, kind of through that process with, with the city about where to locate those bus stops. Um, the only time that we received, uh, complaints from residents was if the bus was idling outside someone's home for a period of time. Um, we didn't hear anything from, like the bus just passing, I guess, if that makes sense. Uh, so the reason why the bus would hold for a period of time is because, uh, our bus schedules are based on what's called time points. And, uh, we give scheduled times at, at specific intersections, not every single stop, but we say at a major intersection, here's the time that we expect the bus to be here. If the bus is early to a time point, we do instruct our drivers to hold and wait, uh, for that time so that the bus doesn't leave early so that people can still catch it based on the schedule. Um, and so we did have a problem with that in, uh, Poplar Grove where the bus was holding a time point that was adjacent to, uh, a residence. And, uh, so there's two things we can do about that. We can move the time point so that the bus doesn't hold there. And we can also adjust the schedule so that there's not excess time in it. Um, and we are being, uh, cognizant of that in the avenues. We are not going to have any time points in front of houses. Um, we will, we will probably, um, either have the time point on South Temple, uh, or we'll have it, uh, adjacent to LDS Hospital. Uh, in order to minimize that, there's always a little bit of, uh, iteration, a little bit of tweaking that goes into the schedule when we move a bus route. So there may be two or three minutes that we have to move around in the schedule, but we want to make sure that that does not involve, you know, the bus waiting in front of somebody's house for several minutes. Um, so that, uh, that, excuse me, the plan is that, uh, for the majority of the neighborhood, the bus will just continue through and then we'll, we'll try to make sure that any place that the bus does have to hold for time is not in a place where it will impact, uh, a residence directly.
Okay. Um, so for the last, uh, our last question to wrap up, I'm going to throw you a little bit of a curve ball, um, and talk about, you know, why we're, uh, why we're doing all of this. Um, and, you know, when I came on the council, um, it was right after the transportation master plan had been approved. And, um, one of my first tasks, um, as a new council member in twenty eighteen was trying to find out how to implement it and how to fund it. And the reason that we're doing all this is that regardless of whether you live on E Street or I Street or M or L, um, or whether you live in Salt Lake or Mill Creek or Holiday is because, um, we have such bad air quality, um, on our red days in the Salt Lake Valley and that air quality, um, impacts all of us. And a huge, um, we, we've got to make changes and everybody is going to have to contribute to that, to making those changes if we want to improve the air quality in our, in our city and in our valley. Um, can you talk a little bit about why, um, you know, redesigning routes to be, um, maximum efficient for ridership and also increasing, um, the frequency of routes helps us get to better air, um, and helps us get to, um, a, a better transit system where people can rely on public transit and, and active transit instead of single occupancy vehicles. How are those things related? Cause some people might think, okay, a bus coming by every seven minutes, that sounds like more pollution to me. Um, and is that counterintuitive to what the goal is, which is for us to have cleaner air in Salt Lake and in the valley?
Uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll start again and then Julianne and Megan can tackle me, um, in a minute, but, um, the, so I think it's important to emphasize, uh, you know, I mentioned earlier, uh, ridership, transit ridership in the avenues is not what we think it could be. Um, but it is important to recognize that we do still have a significant number of people in the avenues that do use buses today. Um, you know, I think a lot of the concerns that we've been hearing are probably from people who don't use the bus regularly. Uh, and so there is kind of a familiarity piece there. Um, but we do, we do have a number of people in the avenues that are riding the bus that do use that to get to, um, mainly to the U of U in downtown at the moment because that's where we take them. Um, but by increasing the frequency of transit service, um, that does a couple of things. Uh, so right now, you know, Route six is every thirty minutes on weekdays. Um, and that, that's not really to the level that you can just get on a bus when you need to or when you feel like it. You do kind of have to plan around that. If the bus is coming at six seventeen, so I have to structure my day so that I can go out the door at six ten, so I can walk to the bus stop. Um, that's how transit riders often just live their lives, you know, and a lot of us don't even think about it anymore. Um, but that's so that I can make my one trip to work or to school. If I'm going out with friends or if I'm going to the doctor or even if I'm going grocery shopping, I'm probably not going to plan my day out to that level. Fifteen minutes is kind of the threshold, based on best practices throughout the country. Uh, you know, that's kind of the starting point where we can say, okay, I need to go to the store. I forgot something. And fifteen minutes is enough. You know, it still feels like a really long time if you walk out to the bus stop and you just missed it. Fifteen minutes is a long time to wait. But it's the threshold at which it really becomes possible to say, oh, I forgot something at the grocery store. I'm going to go get it. Um, or, oh, I, I need to go pick up my child from school or I need to go to the doctor's office or, or I need to do something in the middle of work. You know, I need to go run an errand in the middle of work. I can do that on a fifteen minute schedule where I really can't on a thirty minute. Um, another important part of that, uh, part of the Salt Lake City Transit Master Plan is a goal to be able to make it from anywhere in the city to anywhere else in the city, uh, with just one transfer or zero transfers is great, but one transfer, um, because a bus can't go everywhere, the same bus. Um, if it did, it would take too long and, and it would just, it would not be very practical. So we do kind of, as a necessity, have to have transfers in our system. And, uh, so if you're transferring from a thirty minute route to a thirty minute route, that can become awkward really fast. If your journey that takes you ten minutes to drive involves a twenty-five minute transfer wait in the middle, uh, that is not going to attract a lot of transit ridership, you know, but, uh, so by increasing the frequency to fifteen minutes, we've cut that potential transfer window in half. Um, and that doesn't, again, it doesn't solve everything, but it does make things a lot easier. And, um, as much as we would like to at U T A to tweak every single transfer so that it worked from every route to every other route, um, it just doesn't always work that way. There will always be some transfer, um, you know, if, if you're not, uh, going directly to downtown in the morning, if you're going somewhere else, you know, the transfer going to downtown might be great, but your transfer might not because we can only do so many, uh, transfers in one direction. So by making the service run more frequently, we do have, um, the opportunity to have that even the transfers that don't work, work much better. And that allows people to make trips, you know, um, you'll have to give us the, the right number, Julianne, but it was, it's like twenty percent of trips in Salt Lake City are commute trips. And so there, there, there's a wide variety of other trips that people make, um, that often transit doesn't even come to mind when the service is not frequent enough. Um, so, uh, in, in general, um, that's the most significant factor. If we were to do an analysis on what impacts transit ridership, the most significant factor is the frequency. Um, that, that kind of overrules everything else. And that's just because it makes it more possible for people to make trips, especially trips outside of my one trip to commute, especially now where a lot of people, um, that traditionally worked in offices downtown are working remotely. Almost all the trips that they make are non-commute trips. And so if we really want to make a dent in air quality, we have to start serving trips outside the traditional rush hour. We have to start, you know, and, and, and instead of everybody kind of piling on one express that gets downtown at seven thirty in the morning, which we need to provide a much bigger kind of network and fabric that people can just kind of tap into at eleven o'clock in the morning, seven thirty at night, ten thirty at night, um, because that's where we're going to see the most change in people's behavior from driving a car to being able to use the bus.
And, and, and we have seen that, you know, when the city first started sponsoring the Route nine, for example, we saw the ridership double on that route. So it's pretty significant when you make the service more convenient and frequency is everything. Um, you know, the bus stop improvements certainly help, um, and help with accessibility. Um, about twenty percent of our residents have a disability. Um, and so making sure those stops are accessible is really important. But getting people on the bus is really about frequency. Um, and the data has really proved that out. And we have a dashboard where we show, um, that ridership. And, you know, the unique thing about the avenues is that it, it was originally a streetcar suburb. And so it very much had in place um, exactly the type of network that we're trying to implement, um, in collaboration with U T A where you have a good grid of service that everybody has access to, um, and even can have the option not to own a car, you know, as, as we see, uh, the cost of housing just skyrocket, that can be really important for some families in terms of being able to pay their bills. Um, owning a car is very expensive. And so this is another way that I think, um, not only with air quality, but in terms of equity and in terms of, you know, the economy, these are important things that transit hits on a lot of notes.
Sorry, I do really appreciate, um, everyone taking the time to be here and to give those explanations. And, um, we will get this, um, this dialogue, um, that we've reported out to residents so that they can understand a little bit more, um, of, um, U T A's, um, decisions and obligations and, and how they're, um, moving forward with implementing not only this change, but, but future changes. Um, and of course, people can continue to reach out to me with questions. Um, and as Julianne said, the city has a good working relationship with U T A and it is a partnership. And so, um, some of the decisions are in our hands, some are in their hands and some we make jointly, but, um, we do try to work together to meet all of the needs of residents, um, in an equitable way and, um, in, um, a neighborly way. So, uh, does anybody have any, um, other thoughts that they want to add or any other questions?
I know there was one point, uh, that I, I've heard brought up. I'll, I'll just touch on it real quick. Um, as, I, there's, there's a concern, uh, that maybe increased service will lead to, uh, densification or changes in housing types. News, um, and I just want to say, first of all, U T A has no influence on that. That is, uh, that's entirely in the city's court. Um, but also, um, just to emphasize that based on our uh, demographic and market analysis and based on our, our predictions for how the ridership would go, that, uh, increased transit service in the avenues is justified based on the current land use anyway. You know, this is something, we're not doing in anticipation of any future development or anything like this. This is in response to the transit market that already exists in the avenues.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for touching on that. Um, or anything else anyone want to add? All right. Well, thank you.
I was just going to say, uh, just thanks for the opportunity for us to, to pull this together and, and just, uh, you know, hopefully, hopefully this will answer some questions, but as, as we've mentioned, you know, still continue to reach out and, uh, keep in mind those other engagement points that we'll have along the way as well in the future.
Yes, we're going to, there's going to be, uh, we're going to have a meeting, um, a community meeting that people can come to on Friday and we'll post the details of that, um, with this video. And then there'll also be an opportunity for people to hear a presentation, um, a similar presentation from U T A at the next Greater Avenue Community Council meeting. Um, and that'll be the June meeting, um, which is now at six o'clock on the first Wednesday in June at the, um, at the Avenue's Ranch Library. Um, all right. Thank you, everybody. Um, I appreciate you being here and, um, thanks for the information.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you.